So I'm in call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on March 28, 2019. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a very light agenda this evening, but can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda items as published.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any posts, the motion carries, and we have an agenda. And first on our agenda, under Public Recognitions and Presentations, is the recognition of the North Thurston High School Wrestling Program. I'm gonna call up Josh, come up, the coach, and I'm really happy you're here. I think everyone on this council knows that I'm a graduate of North Thurston High School, so go Rams, and I'll turn it over to Coach.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for having us here tonight. I do appreciate you recognizing this group of young people. It's an extremely hardworking group of young men and women now that are wrestling for North Thurston. They're getting it done on the mat and in the classroom. I'd like to have you guys come up and girls come up and stand behind me here. I'm gonna introduce you and talk a little bit about our program, and then move on here. So let's have the girls up front first. And then let's have freshman Kai get in the back. Girls, come up front. So the North Thurston Wrestling Team's been, I actually looked to see how long wrestling's been going on at North Thurston. I don't know if it was going on when the high school was initiated, but I know that, starting in the 60s, we started having state placers. We've had 60 state placers in the history of our program and 10 state champions. I was hired in 2016, so I just completed my third year there. I have assistant coach Eric Waite here, another one of our assistants Calvin Belton, and lawyer Tillman are also my assistants. Lawyer's also a North Thurston grad, as is Calvin Belton. Calvin's up, and yeah, he's up in Puyallup tonight with some of our other wrestlers that are wrestling freestyle. This is an extremely hardworking group of people, and again, it's, I think really what's being honored tonight is their hard work and their perseverance. Wrestling's a very difficult sport, and I think as a staff, we make it very difficult on them, and they work really hard, again, not only on the mat and in the classroom. We had 19, this is just a small representation of our team. We have over 35 athletes. We believe we have 20 to 25 freshmen signed up for next year, so we are growing. We have over 19 athletes that made the honor roll this year in our cumulative GPAs in excess of 3-2 as a team. Many of our wrestlers compete in other sports, and our varsity in other sports. This year also saw the formation of the first girls' wrestling team in the history of North Thurston Public Schools. We had enough girls that we were able to sanction our own team, and I'm gonna introduce those girls right now, and you're gonna walk across and shake everyone's hand, okay? So the first girl I'd like to introduce off our team is Selena Colo, freshman letterman. Next girl we have off our girls' team is Bina White. Bina's also a freshman letterman, or letterwoman. Next is Sophia Hossino, freshman letterman. And last but not least is a freshman who made the state tournament in her first year wrestling for us, and actually not just made the state tournament, but made the second day of the state tournament, and some of you may have known, due to the weather this year, the regional tournaments were canceled, so the state tournament was a 32-man bracket, which was a gauntlet to complete in two days, and so in her first year wrestling, Dolly, Dolly Monlapaz made the second day of the state tournament for us. And she is, and that's, no one questions that. Next, we'll get to our freshman letterman Luke Howell. Luke was a state alternate this year in his first year with us as a freshman. Next is Charles Freelove, also a freshman letterman for us. Charles is working hard wrestling freestyle this year as well. Looking forward to big things from him. Next is Bruce Price. Bruce is also a freshman letterman, and is also working hard this offseason wrestling freestyle, also a dual-sport athlete. Next is Jason Santos, a freshman letterman, who's also wrestling freestyle, doing very well this offseason. Next is Alex Martinez. He's a sophomore letterman, his first year with us, a great addition to our program. And next is Russell Shoal, freshman letterman, also a member of the football team, has a bright future with us as well. Next here is Joseph Oliver. Joey is one of our state participants at heavyweight. We had two participants at heavyweight in the state tournament. Joey's also the starting center since his freshman year on the football team, excellent dual-sport athlete, actually three-sport athlete. He's on the track team as well. And last but not least, I'm gonna hold him right here, is Kai Bergman. Kai is our 2019, 3'8", 285-pound state champ. Kai's, really exemplifies what this group is about and what we hope to build here. Kai didn't win many matches his freshman year, and as time progressed, he put in the work all year round to get better. By last summer, he was a member of Team Washington and represented our state in Fargo at the Junior National Tournament, both in freestyle and Greco-Roman, and then ended up winning state, knocking off the number-one seeded wrestler 2-1 in the final that took place at 11:15 at night. It was quite a, it was quite a two days, and the kid who wrestled, it was a real epic battle. He's 6'6" and 280 pounds, and it was quite a, quite a night. Just thinking back on it, actually, it was a pretty, pretty, pretty amazing event. I'm also very happy and proud to announce tonight that Kai's gonna be accepting an appointment to the U.S. Military Academy at West Point. He'll be wrestling for West Point next year on their team. So just in summary, this is a group that, and I mentioned this when we talked to the school board as well, when Kai and I were there, this is a group that's representing our school and our community very well, and that's something that they're cognizant of and aware of, and that we keep reminding them, and they're a group that, as a Lacey City Council, you can be proud that's representing, proud to be representing North Thurston. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, this Lacey City Council really appreciates all the hard work you put in. I know how difficult it is to be a student athlete. My daughter goes to, you know, in several sports year-round, and I know how difficult it is, and I'm sorry that councilmember Stedman isn't here, who is, of course, he wrestled at North Thurston, and he also came back and was teaching wrestling at North Thurston for several years too. So unfortunately, he threw his back out, so we all get old, that's what happens. So he couldn't be here tonight, but congratulations to you guys once again, and especially to the girls, that's so awesome. Really proud of you, and keep up the hard, good work. So next on our agenda is public items, public comment items not on the agenda. We have one person who has signed up, Ed Thorp. Could you please? And if the wrestlers, up here is the podium right here, and if the wrestlers, if you guys don't wanna stick around, you guys can scoot out the back if you guys like, go ahead and stand. Don't feel obligated, stay here.
But you're welcome to stay, too.
Good work, guys.
Well, there's a, there's a good segue for me coming after the wrestlers.
Yes.
My name's Ed Thorp. I'm here representing a new theater group that is going to be based in Lacey, Washington. And obviously, the wrestlers are great performers, and we have some great performers in our group. I'm really speaking for Kevin McManus, who is a longtime performer and director of theater here in Thurston County. And Kevin wanted to be here tonight. At the last second, he asked me to step in for him. I'm one of the board members of our group. It's called Goldfinch Productions, and here in Thurston County, we have a very vibrant, very large theater- And here in Thurston County, we have a very vibrant, very large theater community. Unfortunately, one thing we don't have in Thurston County is very many venues to perform at. We're all familiar with Harlequin, downtown Olympia, which has a fantastic, beautiful facility. But for other places to perform, for groups that aren't affiliated with a college or a high school, it's very difficult to find any place. There was one small theater in Olympia that the landlord decided to go a different direction. And, and so, in Thurston County, it's difficult to find places to perform. One place we've always felt that really didn't have access to, easy to see the performing arts is, is in Lacey. And Lacey's the biggest city in Thurston County. It has a lot of, a lot of folks who, I think, would really welcome the opportunity to have this opportunity in their, close to them in their neighborhood. And so, we're actively looking for a venue, a place to perform in Lacey. We are gonna be performing here in eastern Thurston County this summer because we're, last summer, we put on a Shakespeare in the Park performance out in Yelm. And this year, we're also gonna be performing a Shakespeare in the, in the park, and we certainly hope to be doing that in Lacey and other places. But we just wanted to kind of introduce ourselves, let you know this is out there. To, as you're going about your days, if you come across someplace that, hey, you know, that would be a place that might, you find a landlord who is, can't find anything to do with their particular venue, we would love to hear about it and to make a, maybe figure out some way to make that work for people. Because, as you know, theatergoers have money, they go out, they go out to dinner, they do other things before they see a show. Obviously, there's benefits from this kind of small business that we are creating. A typical show might have a budget of $10,000 to $15,000 once you get going. All that money is used in the community. And then there's the, just the fantastic opportunity for being part of a show for all of the people involved. The performers, the people backstage, their families, everyone else benefits from this community group, this active community group. So I really appreciate your time to think of this opportunity.
Have you looked into being able to use the Cobal Center at all at North Thurston High School?
Well, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the high schools and colleges have great performing venues, but by the time you, you look at having to keep a custodian there that evening, some insurance and other aspects of it, it's, it's not an easy, easy route to go. I'm not saying it's impossible. You know, Timberline has a beautiful.
And Panorama has a beautiful.
Well, we have, we have done things at Panorama through the theater out in Yelm, the SRO. But again, you know, they're, they have other limitations as to what they wanna do.
Well, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself.
Is there a website?
Do you have a website, or?
Well, we do have, we are developing one. It's, it's called Goldfinch Productions. And we certainly have a Facebook page, and the, I think the website is up, but I'm not exactly sure of the URL. Kevin has all that information. It's probably in his, in his folder that he was bringing tonight, but thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, our next item is our city manager's report.
I'm the mayor and city council with one item before you, which is the bid award for College Street and 22nd Avenue Roundabout. Martin Hoppy is gonna give that presentation. Our transportation manager.
It's about time, Larry.
You just got around to it, though.
Tonight, we're recommending awards of the College and 22nd Roundabout to Active Construction. We had nine bidders with a three-week ad, and we had quite the range. It went from a little over $5.9 million to $7.4 million, and I was a little optimistic in my estimate.
Is that your estimate, that engineer's estimate?
That is my estimate. But I have looked at Actives' bid, and it is a good bid. I just missed a few things. The project itself is going to reconstruct College Street from pretty much 18th Avenue to 25th Avenue, with the Roundabout at 22nd. We have been working closely with the school over the years, and we have the project, in the school portion of it, scheduled for this year during summer break. And we did give an incentive to the contractor to finish it early as possible. Basically, we have three phases for this thing, and we're expecting this year mainly to be underground utilities. So all the private utilities, water, sewer, is gonna take up most of it, and it's mostly on the west side of the road. So the project itself will probably have College Street down to two lanes for most of the project. So the intent is to do the west side of the road first, do 22nd, do the school, and then they'll come over, cross the street, go to the east side, build that portion of the road. There is some utilities on that side also. CenturyLink has so many things underneath that road. It's gonna be a tight fit. And then, next year, they'll do most of the work on the roadway itself and come in and build the middle of the road. And it should be done probably fall of next year, is our expectation.
Is the, is the crosswalk for the school still gonna, still gonna be there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And what do we think this is gonna do to 22nd Avenue? Do you think there's gonna be a lot more people using golf club and cutting over on 22nd since the Roundabout's there?
Yeah, I think the 22nd will pick up, and that's one of the things we talked about early on in the Transportation Committee, and we did do some widening on 22nd itself between College and Golf Club. It's added a little shoulder on the south side of the road.
Good, okay. Sir, deputy mayor?
So, having lived on 21st now, so I use that road all the time. So how will they enter the school while construction's going on? You know, how, how they often have cars going in and out, usually drop off kids and stuff.
On the driveways of College Street?
Well, yeah, they, they're usually on College, but there's also some on 22nd, so.
Right, and going back, is part of the project, we are building a parking lot for kid drop-off.
Okay.
About where the baseball field is now. The school says they're gonna move it to the, over by the soccer fields.
So you're expanding their parking lot?
And what we're also doing to them is we're separating out parents and buses, which is something they really wanted to have done as part of the project.
How soon will construction start?
If you award it tonight, probably about 30 days or so.
And what will be the traffic impacts on this first phase? Is it will be down to two lanes for, until it's done?
Pretty much.
Mayor?
Yep.
This is where we promote alternative forms of commute. The Chahalas Western Trail is just a couple blocks away. Be great to commute on during the construction of this project.
And I know we have a bike path on Judd too, so, Jason?
But on that note, I would think that Ruttel would be a good alternative, a little bit of backtracking perhaps, one way, but it's a great road, and my only thought about that is that maybe that southbound left turn might need to be watched for more time or something like that, if cars do that, all that stuff, right?
I, I think we'll spread traffic out. I don't know if you remember when we did the overlay project. College Street was almost a ghost town back then, and I know that Boulevard's a good option, Wiggins, Ruttel was good, Carpenter, so they will move around.
Aren't we doing an overlay project on College as well? College and Yelm, right? How far up College does, so how close to this project does that overlay project go?
It is College Street from 37th to Yelm Highway, and Yelm Highway from Ruttel to basically Indian Summer.
Yeah, and that's happening this summer as well, correct?
We actually advertised that today.
So advertised it, and then, so that'll probably happen near the end of the summer?
Should happen during the summer is what we're hoping for. There's a lot of concrete work. The paving itself should only be a few weeks.
Oh, good.
One more quick question, and by the way, I go Ruttel anyway 'cause you can't turn left on College from where I am. But, but will there be, are you expecting some unexpected underground connections or things that you don't know about?
I can almost guarantee it.
Is that, okay, that's why I was wondering, 'cause that's an old road.
Right.
In actuality.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time potholing and trying to get everything identified. I hope we got everything, but I'm sure we're gonna find something.
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2011-19 to LowBitter Active Construction, Inc. from Puyallup, Washington, in the amount of $5,920,921.
Second.
It's been moving second to award this Lacey contract, PW 211-19 to LowBitter for College Street and 22nd Avenue Roundabout. Is there any discussion? I know this is gonna be tough on people who use College Street. Obviously, we're doing this work because it's long overdue, and that College Street corridor, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's the only major north-south corridor, besides, you know, Ruttel and Carpenter, that goes all the way through the city. And it's been long overdue for us to widen this. This has been a long, long process. When did we start looking at widening College Street?
2003.
2003, yeah. And so, and this is the, well, we did some work, of course, of the Roundabout and 45th to Yelm, but this is only really the second major upgrade to, to this corridor, so, and we're not done yet. After we're done with this, this is just the first phase, and then there's two more phases that we, that will, that we need to do. And, and so, it's gonna, it's, we're gonna have to hang on, hang in there, guys, you know? It's gonna, it's not gonna be easy, it's gonna be frustrating, but we're gonna look back on this and we're gonna say, jeez, I wish we, you know, thank goodness we did this. Because this, this 22nd, right here, is such a pain. For anyone who uses it, they know how difficult it is to take left-hand turns up. It's almost impossible. And so, either you put a stoplight there, which we don't wanna do, or, you know, we've had really good successes with Roundabouts, and I think there's a reason why. They're, they're very efficient and conservative, and they're safe. So, you know, we're just, we're the city of Roundabouts. So it's, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any posts? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, just one other item. As per the interlocal agreement policy, I report out any agreements that were signed that are considered routine, and just as a reminder, anything that's routine is $25,000 or less. We have our annual appropriation with the United States Department of Agriculture that does wildlife management services in our parks and other areas. We negotiated a cost of $12,850 for the 2019 year, so that was been signed. Want to report that out as per the policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Jason?
Can you give us an idea what kind of critters they manage out there?
So a combination of geese, sometimes beavers, anything that would impact our parks or wetland areas.
Thank you for the report. Next up is standing general committee reports. First up is the finance committee, which met in February. We had a couple items on our agenda. The first was the fourth quarter investment report. This comes down, there's really three main components of the core report. It's a market commentary and discussion about the city's investment strategy, and analysis to ensure the portfolio is compliant with the city's investment policy, and it's a summary of the city's total invested funds, including information related to types, maturities, and investment activities, investment earnings, and accurals that occurred during the reported period. And then, just a quick summary, the Lacey's core fund portfolio continues to perform well. This is, really has worked out extremely well for us. We went to this, this investment company, we were, we realized we, with, with the reserves that we have in the city of Lacey, we weren't making a lot off of those reserves, and so the fact that we've gone to this, and this investment strategy, is really capitalizing on those, on a good strategy that's giving us bigger returns than we ever, than we've had. So it's, it's been really, really great, and I appreciate all the work you're, that the finance director has, has given us on this. The other item was the 2018 encumbrance carryovers budget amendment. I feel like we already, just came in front of the council already, so that is my report. Next up is General Government Committee.
The General Government and Public Safety Committee met February 26th, and we had three items. The first was the city of Olympia, by way of council member Jones and their, Olympia Home Fund Program Manager Kerry Retlin gave an update to the, what they're doing in Olympia about the, their homeless response plan. And in July of last year, they declared an emergency, a public health emergency, relating to human health and environmental conditions caused by homelessness. And so, they walked us through their plan, and they're hoping to engage with the other jurisdictions in Thurston County to come up with long-term strategies. Our next on our agenda was, due to previous complaints, a draft public nudity ordinance came up to us, but we felt that it needed to go before the work session. However, it turns out the whole thing is kind of moot because there is a court case that is challenging these types of ordinances. And then the last was a travel policy, and we've already passed that, so that is done with, and that's my report.
Thank you. Land Use Committee.
Okay, Land Use also met on February 26th, and our topic was affordable housing and homelessness. We received a number of statistics. The State Department of Commerce estimates 14,000 households in Thurston County are cost-burdened as renters, and an additional 19,000 as homeowners. And cost burden means that you're spending more than 30% or a third of your income on housing. You hear that King and, King County and Seattle are in a crisis around affordable housing, while Thurston County also is getting there, and it's largely due to supply and demand. We're rapidly growing, and most of the households in Thurston County only have one to two people in them. So we're not using those, those houses very efficiently. The Thurston Regional Planning Council reported some statistics on Lacey households in the 2010 census. 63% of households are one to two people. Only 20% are a married couple with children, and 17% are single parent with children. To begin addressing this, I shouldn't say begin, but to continue addressing this issue, Lacey has established six kind of broad policies to try to increase the supply of affordable housing. One policy is try to help people who are in affordable housing now stay there, and that may mean rent assistance or other assistance that will help them stay in that housing. To create a variety of housing choices, this could be apartments, condos, single houses. This could be apartments, condos, single houses, that sort of thing. To, to encourage, um, builders to create a larger supply of affordable housing through, um, a series of city policies that incentivize that. To unlock the housing supply by making it easier to build through the permitting process. To prioritize state, county, and local funding for affordable housing. To continue to support homeless services regionally. A few additional actions the city, uh, plans to take, including, include setting aside a higher percentage of the city's general fund for community investment partnership for social services. To reduce minimum lot size requirements and increase zoning density minimums. To require new low-income rentals to remain low-income forever. To require incentivized inclusionary zoning in designated areas. That means a variety of income, uh, of price levels within a, an area there. And to invest in infrastructure for infill areas that need upgrades. So, it's, it's an ambitious program, and we're trying to tackle a very huge problem.
Thank you for the report. Um, next up is boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. So, Deputy Mayor?
Um, so, um, the Joint Animal Services Commission met, uh, yesterday, um, three twenty-seven. And, um, we, uh, the executive director position was offered to Sarah Hock, and she'll start work on April twenty-ninth. However, she was able to join us on a speakerphone for the current meeting. One of the things we discussed is the fact that last year, the animal services vehicle was stolen and then damaged. And, um, it was, uh, we discussed whether we needed to purchase another vehicle besides the, um, other enforcement vehicles that we have, so that we could use it for other things other than running around for enforcement. And, um, there is one for enforcement that's due to be replaced as well. So, we asked the, uh, city liaison, Jacob Ewing, to bring us back some options of costs and types of vehicles we could look at. Jason also brought back a proposal about, um, we had asked him to look at what we should do for, um, a reserve for if we were in a recession. And so, he brought back a proposal about how to make sure we have funds during that time. And just so you know, we're, we're actually pretty stable because, um, Jazzcom is run by assessments for the jurisdictions. And so, even during the last one, um, we were able to not lay off staff. We just cut back a little on some of minor services. But the concern was that some of the jurisdictions might have to, um, either cut back or not fund, um, go ahead with an assessment to Jazzcom. And, um, what, what that means is that the other jurisdictions have to pick it up so that they cover the amount. And so, uh, one of the proposals, and he's not sure if it's legal yet, but he's going to check this out, is, was to form a bank of funds that the jurisdictions, if needed, could, uh, draw from to maintain animal services until the jurisdiction could pay us back. And, um, he'll come back with more information about that. We spent the last part of our meeting doing a high-level, uh, SWOT analysis that's, um, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and, and a visioning process. And these were very high-level, um, discussions on purpose. And then, um, so, after making the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat lists, we then thought about envisioning where we wanted to go based on those, that list in twenty years. And Sarah, um, the executive director, also made suggestions, uh, to include and provided ideas for what our vision could be. So, this is still in draft form, and we'll continue to work on this next meeting when Sarah Hock will be on board. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Young?
I don't have a report tonight, but I did find out today, it was announced that the, uh, Celia Nightingale, the executive director of the Center for Business and Innovation, resigned, and she's leaving in May. They'll be looking right away to replace her. So, that's pretty big news for the.
That's really big news.
Uh, ADC, she's been there a really long time.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. Well, thank you for that. Councilmember Greenstein? Councilmember Hearn?
Just a reminder that the, uh, five K race against, uh, human trafficking is on the twenty-seventh of April at Mountain View Church. Still taking, um, applications for corporate sponsorships, and still taking registrations for runners or walkers. Thanks.
Councilmember Cox?
Okay, the Community Action Council met last night. We learned that the staff is applying for roughly three million dollars in state and county grants to support services such as supporting housing, housing stabilization, crime victim advocates, and the like. Additionally, wanna remind everybody that Monarch's, um, Children's Justice and Advocacy Center fundraiser is coming up on April twenty-third. It's an early morning event at seven-thirty. It's, we have a wonderful speaker lined up for the event, Kayle Randis, who wrote the book Spilled Milk. And it's based on her own experiences as a child dealing, you know, having her problems compounded by, uh, criminal justice system. And the work of Monarch is to try to make it as easy and painless as possible for child abuse victims to get through the criminal justice system. You know, they bring all the prosecutors, the police officers, and people who, um, social service workers, under one roof. And they even have a dog named Astro that helps kids calm down. So, it's, it's a beautiful program, and it's highly, I think, worthwhile. And if you come, you get a free copy of this book. So, I hope we'll see you there. Intercity Transit did not have our second meeting of the month, um, but they will meet again next week. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets on April fifth. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing meets on April eleventh. Uh, one side note, Olympia City Councilmember Jim Cooper and I will meet with, uh, Thurston County, uh, Chair, Commission Chair and County Manager in a couple of weeks in an effort to try to at least get started on a process that may help, um, the forge an agreement on how, in the, beyond this year, housing grants are chosen and awarded. So, at least we'll have something to take back to our respective councils and, uh, hopefully have something to go forward from that. And then, uh, the Health and Human Services Council, which is the group that actually does this, these awards, meets on April the eighth. That is my short report this time.
Great. Deputy Mayor, do you have something?
Uh, yes, I forgot that I, um, I'm the alternate for, uh, councilmember Young. And, um, Thurston Thrives did meet, um, the, um, of three eighteen. And what was, just a couple major items. We had a presentation by Mary Ann O'Garrow from the, who's the Health, um, Director for the County. And she, uh, gave an, uh, update of community health assessment. And, uh, this was a first step to, uh, get our direct involvement in the county's health plan. Um, and we'll have a chance to, um, engage in the process. The other thing, they had a, a major announcement, um, about Kaiser Permanetti giving us a, um, it, it identified that it was, um, thought the Thurston Thrives was a really good process. And, um, it's, um, uh, it, it wants to support this work. And so, uh, they're looking at a, a grant and stuff for us. And that's, that's my report with that.
Well, just like that, we've reached the end of our agenda. So, it's been a quick night. Last couple meetings been quick, so, just like I like them. And so, um, as always, you keep it classy, classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.